The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you. We're going to begin with the motion for remote electronic attendance.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Potter, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman Large Sonia Berg. Did I say Alderman Large Sonia Berg? Not sure what I said there.
Yeah.
At the committee of the whole N.C. Council meeting on December 1st, 2020. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter? Can you see Alderman Potter?
Alderman Potter? I think you might be on mute.
He is, thank you.
I think he has started.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you. Um, the first agenda this evening is the, um, I have board appointments that I'd like to recommend to the council for your approval. Um, we have a couple of vacancies on the plan commission that I'd like to fill. Um, one appointment is, uh, one of my appointments would be Zach Campbell, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about Zach. Um, he volunteers for his church council and helps plan youth group events. He's also, um, has a housing director of his fraternity. Um, he helps active members plan and draw renovations for their fraternity house. Zach holds a Bachelor's of Science in Architectural Studies degree from the University of Illinois, and he is currently employed as a Leggett Architects Associate. So I'd like to offer him up as a recommendation.
Motion to approve? Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer? Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. My second recommendation is also for the plan commission, and that recommendation is Cal Lee. You all may be familiar with Cal. He was Moline School District's number forty school superintendent. He has since retired. Cal continues to be engaged in the success of Moline, and his background will help support the council's priority of enhancing the relationship between the city and the school district. Cal received an undergraduate degree from Quincy University, masters from Western Illinois University, and doctorate from the University of Illinois. Um, please, uh, please accept my recommendation for his appointment.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, the next item on the agenda is a presentation this evening by George Ryan. Uh, George, are you on the call? George, if you're talking-
I am on the call, Mayor.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're all excited about the bridge, and we're anxious to hear any other cool updates we have other than getting a drive-on.
Excellent. Always a pleasure to address the city council, you and the staff, and I can give you an idea of some of the great milestones we've made in 2000 and what we're planning on for 2021. So I'm going to share my screen here, and barring any technical difficulties, I've got a short PowerPoint that, uh, that I can show you.
We can see your desktop?
Yeah, I'm bringing the PowerPoint up now.
Great.
All right. So, once again, a pleasure to update everyone, and please do not hesitate to ask questions during the presentation if you want to. That shouldn't derail me. So, uh, we'll get started. Right, so I think everyone pretty well knows what the contracts were. There were several contracts on I-74, and I'll just run through them real quick. The London contract for the River Bridge for three hundred and twenty-two million. The Civil contract for one ninety-nine, which was the westbound viaduct, which is completed. Uh, we had a contract, uh, two oh five with Valley for just under, uh, three million that put some pipe in and did some work. The Langman contract did some local roads work in Bettendorf. McCarthy contract is working on what you see in yellow here from, uh, the viaducts north. Uh, the Civil two hundred contract was just let earlier this year, and they're underway. Um, so those are the contracts that are, uh, in Iowa. And the Illinois contracts were two major contracts. The contract from about a mile south of Avenue to the cities, down close to, uh, Seventh Avenue, and that's Walsh Construction at eighty-four million, and a contract from Seventh to the river, which is Kramer, for eighty-two million. Okay, so there are just a few major lettings left in this corridor. We've got an elevator in Bettendorf that's got a tentative letting of September of 2021. River Bridge removal is tentative at this point for September of 2021, and then there's a landscaping in October of 2021, and these are in Iowa. Then we've got one Illinois letting that is tentatively January of 2021 for landscaping in Illinois. So those are the remaining, uh, larger lettings for this corridor. All right, so let's talk a little bit about, uh, local agency participation. So the total obligation for Moline, uh, actually has been reduced by almost seven hundred and fourteen, well, just a little over seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars due to the elimination of six identity elements. So that's a net reduction of just over seven hundred and fourteen. Boston curd through ten, ten thirty-one of twenty is, uh, just over one point six million, uh, participation on Moline's part out of the three-point, uh, almost three point five. So we've made a lot of progress this year. May sixth, we, uh, we set the Keystone piece. That was a monumental day for the, for the project crew, and I suspect for the Quad Cities. Um, July sixteenth, we, uh, put the final of six floor modules in so that we could begin decking the approaches as well as decking the arch. Uh, September fourteenth, we poured the third and final westbound arch deck portion, and November thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, by the way, we opened, uh, I-74 westbound traffic, westbound, uh, structure, the new structure to traffic. So monumental accomplishments for 2020 to, uh, get traffic on the new westbound I-74. So what are we doing now? Well, um, some of you may see, may have seen that there are yellow, there is a yellow tower growing out from between the two arches, and, uh, that yellow tower is actually a crane tower for helping us further assemble the eastbound side, and this is on the Illinois side, the, uh, arch foundation on the Illinois side. There will be one on the Iowa side as well. That, over the next week and a half or two weeks, that will grow from being roughly a hundred foot in length to being four hundred foot in length, so it will get much taller. And this, uh, the crane towers actually have what they call a climber section, so from this point on, they will self-destruct as they climb up. So it's going to be pretty cool to watch this get constructed, and that's going to help us, uh, make a schedule and keep schedule as we build the, uh, the eastbound arch. One of the problems and one of the main reasons for these towers is that as you get, especially on the Iowa side, as you build out on the eastbound arch, it gets awful close to the existing structure, so it's kind of shoehorned between the new westbound and the existing structure. So these tower cranes are going to help us work in very tight areas. All right, and some really good photos of, of some of the great work that happened this year in Illinois. You know, as of November, uh, twentieth of 2020, and still as of today, we're focusing on, uh, wanting to get, if you can see my pointer, getting ready and pouring, hopefully pouring this deck sometime yet this fall, early winter, depending upon weather. Um, so that's ongoing. We've also got a lot of work going over on the second photo on the eastbound side as we, we prepare for putting eastbound traffic on the actual eastbound interstate. And if you remember, um, Moline was very instrumental in helping us develop a plan to, uh, get the eastbound side constructed or almost completely constructed during 2020, and we went to a public meeting in December of nineteen. The public okayed us changing the traffic staging, and that has allowed better access and, uh, a lot more, uh, access for Moline as we move forward than you would have had under the, uh, staging that was called for. So that's been a plus. Um, I guess I would mention the piece that you see at my cursor here right at River Drive. Um, we should be actively working on filling in this gap now. As soon as we put eastbound, uh, I'm sorry, westbound traffic on the new westbound bridge, we were able to begin removing the off ramp that goes down to River Drive so that we could begin, I'm sorry, the on ramp to go westbound that, that comes from River Drive. There wasn't enough clearance to finish this gap and prepare to pour these decks until we got that done, so now they're actively working on that, and the intent is to close that by spring at the latest. Um, and also build what we call Ramp Six C, which will be the first ramp, uh, that once we put eastbound traffic on the westbound bridge, that'll be the first off ramp that they'll be able to access, which will take you to Sixth Avenue. So, um, we're looking forward to accelerating that work and getting it done as quickly as we can. Um, and we're still talking with staff and, and working through how we best do that. So we continue to look for ways to expedite this and, uh, enhance the, uh, access into Moline. So our next steps then would be to switch the eastbound traffic to the new westbound bridge, and at this point, it looks, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to do that by the end of this month, um, which will be great. And remember that when we do that, the existing eastbound bridge will still be available for local traffic, so local traffic in Bettendorf will be able to hop on the eastbound bridge from, uh, either from the loop ramp off of, uh, off of Grant, or they'll be able to hop on from the ramp off of State Street, and they'll be able to get off in Moline either, um, at, uh, River Drive or at Seventh Avenue as they do today. And there'll be another stage later on where we'll eliminate the loop ramp, uh, in Bettendorf, and we'll probably eliminate the, uh, the off that they're currently doing and will continue to do at Seventh Avenue, but by then, eastbound will, will be on the new eastbound side of I-74 in Moline anyway. So then it will go back to utilizing the existing bridge for staging as it was envisioned just from, um, from State Street in Bettendorf to, uh, to River Drive in Moline. So we've got some different scenarios to keep traffic flowing well in Moline as we work forward, and we're, uh, fine tuning those as we move forward to make it as, as less intrusive as we can. And, uh, at this point, we, our goal is to complete the eastbound arch by the end of 2021, so we're feverishly working towards that, and we're very anxious to get the, uh, get the, uh, the tower crane up on the Illinois side so that we can start setting the next pieces of the arch on that side, and that'll be followed by, uh, getting the tower crane up on the Iowa side and setting the next pieces of the arch of the Iowa side. So we're looking very, very forward to, uh, making some great headway this winter and getting that arch closed sometime, uh, I mean, up in the summer. So with that, I guess I would entertain any questions that somebody might have.
Thank you, George. Are there any questions from the council? I can't see everybody's faces right now, so if you're remote and you have a question, just shout it out. Do we have any questions from staff? Well, thank you very much, George, for another update. We're certainly excited to see the wonderful progress that you're making on the bridge, so thank you for all your good work, and thank you for keeping all your crews safe as well.
Very exciting times, and we appreciate Moline helping us through the bumps as we move forward, and, and we're fully committed to, um, keeping Moline in the loop and doing whatever we can to minimize whatever impact there might be. We realize there's always impact with construction. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great night.
Thank you. Um, we'll now begin with our regular agenda items, and we do have quite a few here, so we're just going to begin at the top. Um, item number one, parking prohibited, Fourteenth Street. Joe Kuhl and Beck will be presenting.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Uh, this first item is a, was a traffic, uh, um, request brought to by a local resident to the engineering, traffic engineering committee. Uh, the resident, uh, requested that, uh, um, we, we restrict parking at Fourteenth Street and Twentieth Avenue for thirty feet. Uh, they find it difficult to see cross-traffic, um, when driving east and west on Twentieth Avenue at that intersection. Um, staff reviewed the intersection, did find that cars and vehicles were parking all the way up to the intersection. Uh, we reached out to the, to the residents that would be affected by losing the parking spaces in there. Both residents were in favor of, of the signage, um, to increase visibility, and, uh, staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Item number two, street light request, Forty-Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Fourth Street intersection. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this was a, uh, request from another resident. Um, this intersection, Forty-Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Fourth Street, is, uh, down by Cloverleaf, uh, Trailer Park, and, uh, it's a dark intersection. There are, there is a, um, a traffic light within the distance that we have in code, but it doesn't, uh, help to light that intersection. Uh, the other, the other closest traffic, uh, or traffic light is, or, uh, um, light is, is well away from that intersection. Uh, again, it's a, it's a safety concern to light up these intersections. It does fall within our code, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron to approve and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Uh, item number three is the 2021 Annual Meetings Calendar. Janine Collin Peck Card will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, um, had provided, um, a proposed schedule for 2021, and then, um, Alderman Went reminded me today, and thank you, Alderman Went, for that, that staff had requested before that those, um, work sessions, which are in gold, um, on that proposed schedule, land between the regular meetings, that it helps with, um, time to prepare for meetings. And so I adjusted that, and I emailed that out to you just before this meeting. Those of you that are here have provided a hard copy, but please refer to that one. Um, were there any other questions on the proposed calendar? I didn't change it much. There are still typically three meetings per month until we get to November and December, and then it changes a little bit with the budget.
Are there any questions or concerns about the proposed agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed dates.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron to approve what's been presented by Janine and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thanks, Janine.
Thank you.
The next item will be presented by Allison Fleming is the IMRF Agreement Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having a little trouble with my video here. Um, let's see if I can get it to work. I don't think I'm going to have any luck. Okay, I'm going to just jump in. Um, so these next two items relate to the change to retiree health benefits, uh, for new employees hired on or after January one, 2020. Um, the first item applies to non-union and UAW employees. Uh, if you'll recall, as part of the change to retiree benefits, new employees will be required to contribute ten dollars per pay period to their retiree health savings account, uh, beginning in January of 2021. This resolution would allow those contributions to be included in those employees' IMRF earnings, similar to what the city already does for Section 125 contributions. Uh, so staff would recommend approval, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion to approve by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this first item? We'll vote on them separately. Let's, roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? Alderman Schoonmaker, you may be on mute.
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then item number five is, uh, ICMA's agreement.
Yes, so this item again relates to the change to retiree health, health benefits for new employees, and there's four different groups affected here, so FOP, IFF, UAW, and again, non-union. Uh, this resolution is required to amend our adoption agreement with ICMA RC. They administer our, uh, health, uh, retiree health savings plans. Um, as a separate matter, this resolution also will designate how forfeited funds under the plans are distributed when a planned participant passes away and doesn't have a, a surviving spouse or any eligible dependents. So staff would recommend approval of this as well.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion to approve by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Allison. Uh, you have the next item as well, the United Healthcare, um, BP policy.
Yes, thank you. So this item is for our health plan. It is reinsurance coverage, um, for medical and prescription drug. Um, we have two types of coverage. We have specific, which is a hundred and seventy-five thousand per individual on the plan, uh, and then we also have aggregate coverage for the total, uh, anticipated claims. Um, we are requesting a renewal with UHC BP for one year, um, and, and are receiving an increase lower than anticipated, so that was, uh, definitely positive. So staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Allison. Uh, item number seven will be presented by Chief Gall. Universal Protection Services Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, you have seen this agreement, or some version of it, uh, annually since March of nineteen ninety-nine. The Moline Police Department has had a strong presence at the South Park Mall retail establishment since nineteen ninety-six, and have entered into a reimbursement agreement since nineteen ninety-nine. Last year, with the help of Attorney Price, brought, you know, modified, uh, agreement, updated, uh, agreement, and this has particularly, uh, particularly been an annual contract. Uh, this year I was, uh, entered into negotiations with them to extend this for a two-year agreement. Uh, I just draw to your attention, uh, the, in, uh, on page one, number two, the term, "Either party may terminate the agreement at any time without cause upon ninety days prior written notice." Um, and, uh, Universal, uh, Protection Services, or what you may know as doing business as Allied, Universal Security Services, are the, um, unarmed private security at South Park Mall and all Maychurch, uh, properties that, that, uh, they have contracts with. So it does, uh, bring in a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in revenue, and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Uh, the next three items will be presented by our Finance Director, Carol Barnes. The first item is item number eight, 2021 Property Tax Levy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Carol.
Um, thank you. Annually, the City of Moline levies a tax on all real property within the city. The recommended tax levy, collectible in two thousand and twenty-one, is fifteen million, eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, which is a hundred thousand dollars left than in two thousand and twenty. The levy for general corporate and special fund purposes are as follows. Five million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the police pension fund, six million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for the fire pension fund, one million, seventy-eight thousand, forty-two dollars for the park fund, and lastly, two million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for the library fund. No public hearing is required as the levy is less than a hundred and five percent from the previous year, and adopting this ordinance and levying and assessing taxes in the amount of the fifteen million, eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars balances the budget for 2021, and staff seeks approval of this ordinance.
Move to approve? Went?
Second. Schoonmaker?
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Schoonmaker. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Went?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I just wanted to thank, uh, um, staff, uh, for their hard work, uh, putting this, uh, budget together that, uh, allows us to, uh, reduce the, uh, the levy this year. I want to thank the, um, the residents of Moline, um, that we know that 2020 has been a very difficult year. There's been lots of sacrifices, uh, uh, through this year, um, that we were, uh, able to be proactive, to, to work forward, uh, and make adjustments to our budget this year so that going into 2020, uh, we were able to, uh, reduce the burden on, on our, uh, the tax burden on our residents, uh, moving into 2021, and, uh, I just wanted to thank And I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on this.
Thank you, Alderman Went. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Nay.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
That motion carries. Item number nine is the 2021 SSA Ad Valorem Tax Levy. Carol?
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff seeks approval from City Council to levy a special ad valorem tax for Special Service Area Number Five for the tax levy year of 2020, collectible in 2021. Adopting this ordinance and levying and assessing taxes in the amount of $7,750 will generate $132,475, collectible through the TIF, which is an amount sufficient to fulfill Special Service Area Number Five 2021 budget request. And with that, staff seeks approval of this ordinance.
Motion to approve? Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Scoo, I'm sorry. Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Item number 10 is the 2021 SSA VI Ad Valorem Tax Levy. Carol?
Thanks, Your Honor. Staff seeks approval from City Council to levy a special ad valorem tax for the Special Service Area Number VI for the tax levy year 2020, collectible in 2021. And adopting this ordinance and levying and assessing taxes in the amount of $92,500 will generate $269,255, collectible through the TIF, an amount sufficient to fulfill SSA Number VI 2021 budget request. And with that, staff seeks approval of this ordinance.
Motion to approve? Parker?
Second. Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Carol. The next.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next two items will be presented by Tony Lodi, our Utilities General Manager. The first one is item number 11, HR Green Incorporated Professional Services Agreement. Tony?
Hi, Mayor. This item is in response to Congress enacting America's Water Infrastructure Act of 2018, which is a change to the Safe Drinking Water Act. And the AWIA requires water systems that serve over 3,300 people to conduct a risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan for their water system. We decided to issue an RFP to seek a professional partner to help us with this, and received 10 responses. Of the 10 responses, we evaluated them and found three to be relatively equal, and are recommending a partnership with HR Green to complete this effort. The staff is recommending approval of this resolution for an agreement with HR Green in the amount of $24,755.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, may I have a question?
Yes, Alderman Berg.
Uh, Tony, um, this question for Tony. Tony, was there any opportunity for us to do this with one of our neighboring cities? To partner, so we can coordinate with them?
We did look into this, however, there's two things that make that a rather difficult endeavor. One is that the, uh, the documents that are produced as a result of this study are confidential in nature, and so the larger the consortium that you put together, the, uh, the, um, the less confidentiality you have. And then number two is each water system is unique in its own way, and, uh, you know, it requires its own, um, individual effort to do this study. We did, in fact, sit down with both East Moline and Rock Island and discuss this and concluded that it wasn't a worthy effort to pursue.
Alderman Berg?
Uh, follow up, Tony. Um, so what was the reason that we changed and decided to not do it internally?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part. What was the reason we decided not?
You said staff initially planned to do this internally. Why is it that we are not doing it internally?
We just don't have the staff now. At the time of this decision, we were down 12 people of 60 in water and WPC.
Okay, so, anyway, Mayor.
Alderman Berg.
So is this task, is it gonna be done, or started in June of 2021, so won't we have all of our majority of the staff that you need for this by then? So we can do it in-house and take the cost low?
Uh, Alderman, this is a very significant endeavor that will take all, the entire six months. We expect to immediately get moving on this upon your approval, and expect to complete this with only a month under the wire.
Administrator Ronnie could also like to add a comment.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion among many of the municipalities in the state of Illinois as to how they're handling this requirement that the federal government has given us. And nearly, you know, I haven't found one that isn't contracting this out. Part of the problem is it's a new federal requirement, and internally, while we have very smart and good people working our water system, doing it without assistance will be very difficult and to get compliance, so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is River Cities Engineering Agreement. Tony?
Mayor, this item also has to do with vulnerability, but on the wastewater side. So at the South Slope Wastewater Treatment Plant, we rely on an old Windows XP desktop machine to operate all the automation within the treatment plant. And as you know, we operate that treatment plant only one shift a day. And so, you know, the other two shifts during the day, that automation is working for us to make the process decisions and direct the flows and turn pumps on and off and so forth. Anyway, that IT, the IT folks have been after us because that XP machine is no longer supported by Microsoft. The Windows XP platform is no longer, and it's an extreme vulnerability, I'm told. So we looked at options on how to do away with that, and unfortunately, the platform that we use is RS View, and it is not, RS View is not compatible with any of the modern operating systems. And so we solicited an RFP looking for partners to assist us with this effort, and we received six responses and evaluated them and found that River Cities was the best option for us. They have, they were completely responsive to our request. The only partner, the only solicitation or the only response that was fully compliant with the solicitation, and their price was competitive with the others. So we, at this point, are recommending an agreement, a design-build agreement with River Cities Engineering in the amount of $160,760 to improve the controls at the South Slope Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Waldron?
Tony, the $160,760, where are you, where are you gonna get this to pay, to pay for it?
That money is, in fact, budgeted in, we have $190,000 budgeted for this project in the 2020 budget. When, you know, we'll attempt to carry some of that money over into 2021. Obviously, we're not gonna complete this in this calendar year.
Thank you.
Alderman Parker?
Tony, I noticed that River Cities is located in Danport, so, you know, great job keeping it local. Were there any bidders from Moline that were in the process?
No, we're not.
Well, thanks again for keeping that one local. We need the, we need the help.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Good man.
I do not believe we have another this evening, so we're gonna move into our informational items. The first one will be presented by Dirk Price, our Corporation Counsel, and his informational is on the update of broadband negotiations and alternatives.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, as you're aware, throughout the pandemic, the city councils worked with the school district and Project NOW to bring digital connectivity to families and people who might not otherwise have it. In that same vein and initiative, we've been working with bringing broadband to the whole city, high-speed fiber essentially, to bring that kind of service to the city. That involves the city in a couple of ways. One, work in the right-of-way, adding additional poles, and then also coverage of the city or the footprint. And given the city's dedication to having its entire footprint served by broadband, and also being mindful of what's going on in the right-of-way, and how many secondary poles and all the rest would possibly be present, it's time to come back to you and get some direction as we move forward. Genesee Communications has reached out to us. They're very interested in providing services. Their services are at a particularly high level for the fiber optic. They've gotten some money from the state of Illinois to bring it east of here, to the more rural areas, and so they're motivated. Metronet is working with, they also provide cable, so they bundle it up, cable and broadband. They've been working with some of our neighbors to do that, although in their franchise agreements, some of the issues that have been there are not serving the entire cities, and also use of secondary poles and so forth. So I outlined for you in a memo, three alternative approaches we can take. One, we can just let the market do it. The laissez-faire approach, if you will, where we've got a right-of-way ordinance in place to protect our own infrastructure, to try and minimize poles. One of the things that happened with the microcell movement across the state of Illinois is your residents woke up one morning to find a pole in their front yard that was never there before. Because though, without having a right-of-way ordinance, the microcells were allowed to put a small pole in people's front yards, and people don't like that amazingly. So we want to update the Chapter Six to make sure we take care of the issue of the poles not showing up overnight, but that we control how the right-of-way is used. But once that's in place, then the market forces could bring broadband to select parts of the city. They'd cherry pick the most lucrative parts for them, where they believe people, based on demographic research, would pay the premium for the broadband. The second alternative is, well, on the other end of the extreme, the third alternative I gave you, from doing nothing and letting the market doing it, is to take control. And there are communities across the country that are doing this by building out the conduit system and then licensing or leasing, if you will, space in the conduit to the fiber companies. And they make their money back that way. It's essentially a revenue bond situation. I gave you West Des Moines, which is the most recent and closest to you, $35, $40 million project over six years. That way, they control that the fiber has to be everywhere in town, because they built the conduit that way. Now, $35 to $40 million done by the city of building the conduit, that takes advantage of some fact that West Des Moines has been doing some work further back in history than we have here in the City of Moline. For years, West Des Moines has been burying what's been called shadow conduit. Every time they opened up the earth for road, for utilities, they put in a shadow conduit, a way to link up. And so they're not having to start from scratch with putting in conduit. So we're behind a little bit there. It might even be a little more costly, take a little bit more time for us. We're not quite as big as West Des Moines, but nevertheless, that's a general ballpark of it. There's a new thing on the horizon, which is to allow the use of your sewer system and your existing storm sewer systems as conduits, if you will, for fiber. That, that's like the first year of a new car. Yeah, there's a lot of headaches to be worked out, but people are doing that. So that's something we can do. If you wanted to be the investor, control the space, and then lease it. In between, and this is what staff's recommending, is a request for proposals, where we get a proposal from the market. We let the market tell us what it is, and then they tell us what the gap is, so that if we want to pursue policy goals of an expanded footprint on the city, digital equity, if you will, or if we want to expand more control, fewer secondary poles, more in-ground or underground running of the cable, the fiber optic cable, we can do that. And so the thing, we've got some suitors. We have MediaCom, Metronet, and Genesee. There may be others, but those three are circling overhead, if you will. And so staff's recommendation is to move forward, get the proposals, and indicate to them that the city is going to be interested in the possibility of closing the financial gap on the spreadsheet to bring an expanded footprint, and also to put as much underground as possible. The deratio taught us one thing, which is wires above ground are less dependable than wires underground. You lose service. And the epidemic, or the pandemic has taught us that people need these services more than ever, and high speeds better than not. So while this has been an initiative of council, and we've been pursuing it during my time here, these intractable problems of the costs of getting it to everybody in town, we think that through the proposal process, we can get that. And so I'm willing to entertain any questions, but otherwise, I'm looking for consensus to move forward with preparing and then sending out to the marketplace an RFP for proposals about bringing broadband for your consideration.
Thank you, Dirk. Alderman Waldron, did you have a question?
First of all, I give my consensus out during the RFP. Is, like Alderman Berg's last item, is there any thought process to the three of us joining together, East Moline, Rock Island, Moline, for economies of scale?
Well, Rock Island and East Moline, it's a good question. I will certainly reach out to them to do it. But they've recently concluded franchise agreements on the cable-broadband combo platter with Metronet, and they didn't insist on any of the things we insisted on. So they're, they're getting secondary poles, and they're not serving their entire communities. They're letting them be cherry picked. So we might be a little bit behind there, but I'll certainly reach out to them to see about, about doing that. I, in talking to MediaCom, Metronet, and Genesee, nobody's mentioned that broad a scale, but the economy of scale is worth asking, so I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Dirk, it's my understanding, both in Rock Island and East Moline, that they signed agreements in which parts of their city are not covered. Most of the time, it's the left well-off areas. I know that, like, Metronet is across the river. Did Bettendorf, did they wind up just doing part of Bettendorf and do secondary poles there, or how did, how did that shake out across the river?
Bettendorf did the RFP process. Bettendorf was committed to service to the whole city, and the final agreement at the end of the day has a few exceptions that we might see from Metronet in a proposal. Those exceptions are a requirement that in order to extend to a certain part of the city, that those people may have to prepay and get deposits, so that there would be, that they're guaranteed paybacks, if you will, for expanding. Bettendorf also agreed that if they weren't able to get right-of-way access on terms acceptable in the sole opinion of Metronet, that they wouldn't have to go there then either. And then they built in an exception process for being above ground, and Metronet applied for many variances, and Bettendorf was able to control that and reduce the number of variances. So there are lessons to be learned and taken advantage of from what Bettendorf did to the RFP process. But as it shook out, the, while there is certainly a gesture and a policy initiative to cover the whole city, the phasing and the exceptions may end up being, swallowing the general rule, if you will. the phasing and the exceptions may end up being swallowing the, the general rule, if you will. And so we need to be careful about that when we accept a proposal here. And that's, that's where, frankly, in the conversations with Genesio, they were, they were quite frank about it. They have a, they have a well-reviewed product, Genesio does. But the, there is a cost gap if to serve the whole city and to do it underground. There's a gap between that and profit that one would expect for a return on investment. Just like we do with TIF districts, sometimes you incentivize that in a way. And I've outlined for you some of the incentives that we may be able to use with them.
Dirk, could you? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alderman Went. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh. Could you please just go down that list of incentive opportunities for us to bridge that financial gap, if there is one identified?
Sure. So immediately available, there's a, there's immediately available, and then some things to explore. Of the immediately available, if they were bundling cable with it, and that would apply to Metronet and MediaCom, but not to Genesio, but we could waive the cable franchise fee. That, that's a possibility. Certainly, we could waive the permit fees for working in our right-of-way. Where they are working in the enterprise zone, there's relief available. We could go and ask our neighbors to expand the enterprise zone. We could start with asking for the whole city. I don't think we'd get it. But if we could expand the enterprise zone, then people could get whatever supplies they bought for that would be without the sales tax on it. So that would be available. And then finally, TIF funds are available, certainly for servicing properties within the TIFs, but also for nodes and things that may be physically located outside a TIF area, but that is essential to serving properties within the TIF. Those kinds of funds can go to help bring those nodes, bury those vaults, do those kinds of things. So those are the ones that are immediately available. Another one, a cost reduction where we're not hiring anybody to drill or do any of the underground work, is again to explore the use of the sewer systems. If you want, we can do that. And then going forward, because of the private nature of this, we wouldn't be able to float non-taxable bonds. But we could float taxable bonds, and given our solid credit rating, we might be able to save them some money. You know, it's a pretty competitive interest rate market at the moment, so that's worth exploring. And then lastly, and not that we're going to do it right now, but it's the kind of thing where maybe get on the other side of the pandemic and explore it, is the, the so-called Netflix tax. You, as a home rule unit of government, are recognized, it's been enforced by the courts now, you can impose a tax on streaming services for things like Netflix, Hulu, the, the movies and the TVs, and also the gaming services. In this way, it would be a little bit like a tollway, where more of the burden is shifted to the actual users than taxpayers generally. And so those who value high speed the most are paying a slight premium through the Netflix tax, as it's called, that's been enforced and upheld in Illinois. You could do that. Now, again, you've committed to no new taxes. You've held that line, so that's something for a future consideration, especially on the other side of the pandemic. But that's one of the future ones that could be available too.
Thank you. So I, I think it would probably be helpful for us to take some action this evening. I know that it's an informational, but we could validate it at our next meeting because I would, I would like to see some, some motion forward on this particular endeavor. I think it's important to our community. So I would entertain a motion to proceed with one of the recommended, recommended alternatives.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the RFP process.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron.
Second.
Second, Schoolmaker.
Thank you, Alderman Schoolmaker. Alderman Williams, B two to it, though. So we have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on the, the motion to proceed with the RFP? Hearing none, we'll go through roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Dirk.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item is also an informational, and it has to do with CARES relief for Moline businesses. KJ Whitley is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. The city of Moline has been fortunate to receive two rounds of the CARE, CDBG CARES Act funding. And within each round, staff has recommended small business grants or loans. With the CARES Act funding, it is a way to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. Tonight, the staff is asking for a direction from council, final direction, on whether these should be grants, or whether they should be low-interest forgivable loans for the first round at five thousand dollars. I sent an email. I don't know how many of you guys have had a chance to read it, kind of with the overview.
Maybe you could just kind of give us a summary, KJ, because the public is also listening.
Okay. Basically, it would be a five thousand dollar small business, either loan or grant. And the way that we are proposing to define small businesses is a staff of fifty or less. This would be an opportunity for retail, for bowling alleys, gyms, fitness centers, tourism, and restaurants and bars also to apply for these either grants or loans. We have a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so that would mean twenty-two loans. And we hope to start this application process later in December. They would be due the first week in January, and then the selection committee would take a look at the applications and make their awards.
If I, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to supplement what KJ's saying. So KJ Tara and Jeff Manis have brought to my attention, in rolling out this, you'd already authorized a hundred and ten thousand dollars of zero percent interest loans for people. And our business community is certainly hurting, and they have reported back to KJ Tara and Jeff that they just aren't interested in more debt, that the debt is what concerns them. These, these aren't forgivable at the moment, and even though they're zero percent, and maybe you would swap out for a credit card debt you had or something, that twenty-three percent, you could swap out five thousand dollars to zero percent. With us, they're just not interested in that burden in that sense, knowing that at some point, no matter what they did, if they can survive, that they'd have that to pay even five years out. And so we challenged, KJ and Tara and Jeff have come up with creative solutions here, which would be to turn this into a forgivable loan, as opposed to a grant for these small businesses, so that if they stayed in business, you know, six months out, these small businesses, that we would forgive the loan, it would position, as the mayor said in her interview on, on TV, it would position them to restart, that they'd have some cash for inventory and other things they would need. Now, because it's CARES money, not Cures money, we can't be quite as creative as we used to. So I sort of pushed back on this, but KJ and Tara have done the research. The businesses would have to have been in business, you know, licensed and in business on the beginning of March, when, when all of this hit. So while there had been some discussion from some of you about new businesses, they had to admit in business at least in March. So the nation businesses right now looking to get started, this wouldn't be for them. There are other things we can do for them, and we'll find ways to do that. But this has to be for businesses that existed in March, and we'll find creative ways to tie it to dealing with the pandemic. But that's the proposal really in front of you, is to switch it from the zero percent loans payable in five years to forgivable loans if they survive for six months, I think, is the proposal, right, KJ?
That's correct.
So that's what we're proposing.
Alderman Waldron.
If it is a loan, and the previous ones, or if we do go a loan, and they pay us back, do we get to keep that money, or do, what happens ultimately to that money if they did pay?
Yeah, so under the loan program, it does come back to us, and then KJ has worked magic with HUD about us repurposing that into other kinds of loans. So it has been recirculated, and that was the intent originally of the zero percent loans, is that a few years down the road, we'd have money to put back into the revolving loan funds, those kinds of things. But at the moment, we don't have anybody who wants to take the loan.
Thank you.
KJ, I have a question for you. Something, you know, obviously, there's a need in our community right now. But when I look at it, if it's five thousand dollar forgivable loans, that's twenty-two loans off the hundred and ten thousand. There's more need than there, there is money. How will you prioritize the applicants? And, and what will be the plan for making sure that, that everybody that may be interested will find out about it and have an opportunity to apply?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. The selection committee would consist of three staff members and then two aldermen. Looking at the criteria, we would look at their financial stability. We would look at the fact that their doors are still going to remain open, and that they're employing at least one full-time equivalent employee that is low to moderate income. We would look at their bank records, and we, we would look at their business and the way that it's functioning out there today.
When you look at their financial viability, is it a more distressed company that would be more likely to be awarded the money, or a less distressed company?
I would think somewhere in between, Mayor. We want them to have enough money to sustain and move forward. You know, the five thousand can't be the end-all, be-all for the next six months for them. So I mean, they would have to show some financial stability moving forward.
Thank you.
We've been asked for an impact statement as well. That's part of the application.
Thank you. Alderman Parker, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Thanks. Thanks for bringing this up. In having the opportunity to read all the impact statements on the money that we just gave out recently, I am not interested at all in having this be a loan and having it to be repaid back. There are sixty businesses out there that are in dire need of help, and the five thousand dollars that they got most recently is just going to help them get to, I don't know, the next week perhaps. So we need to do whatever we can to try to help our small businesses. You know, if we just passed our, our levy, you know, as we know, none of that goes towards operation of the city, basically. So we need to get these businesses back up and running. So I'm, I'm all in favor of this program if it is designated to be forgivable loans, forgivable grants, however you want to structure it, but in a way that they are not expected to pay it back. And are you looking for some sort of a motion tonight?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I'm not sure exactly what that motion sounds like, but so moved.
So we have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg, and Dirk is going to restate the motion.
Yes, it's to convert the zero percent loans into forgivable loans to small businesses on the criteria we set for tonight, including that they be in business six months, and the criteria that was, that's it.
Oddly enough, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Thank you. Alderman Berg, do you have a statement?
Yeah, Mayor, I do have, I mean, I have a question. What did you say was the criteria for them to get the loan, or to be a forgivable loan?
KJ?
We're going to look, Alderman Berg, we're going to look at their financials. We're going to read their impact statement. They have to maintain a full-time equivalent employee for the six months, and they would have to have some type of financial stability to move forward.
So do another question for you. I hear you say earlier, they have to employ an employee that is low to moderate income?
Yes.
Wait a minute. How are we going to require, I mean, we're going to ask them, this necessity has to come to them?
You're, you're kind of...
I mean, why do we need to make it more difficult for them?
I, I get that you were asking me, do they have to employ a low to moderate income employee? And then it kind of...
Correct.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Did you, I'm saying, I said, okay, like, let's, let's take Lagoa County first, okay? So all of her employees, my guess would be, are, you know, middle-high income. We are not going to be able to give them one of the loans because they don't employ a low to moderate income person?
And in situations like that, one thing that we can look at, say they have a single employee in their minimum wage, and it's a full-time equivalent, how do we get to that full, those full-time equivalent hours?
Yeah, the, while, while the criteria, Alderman Berg, is built into the HUD money, the CDBG money, that you have to have a low to mod, there's a way to work with any part-time person or some of the hourly wages to say that's the person who meets that criteria.
So that is a, so Dirk, that is a HUD requirement. It is not a city of Moline requirement, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Dirk.
KJ? Go ahead, KJ.
I know some of you have the concern about a new business that's starting up, and say that business is not in business or was not in business before COVID. I know on one of the examples that I read, if that new business was not in business before COVID, but as long as they started after COVID, and it was something in response to prepare or prevent COVID, say, making medical supplies, then they would be eligible for this type of assistance. For businesses that were not operational, that really don't pertain to COVID per se, I do have a question in the HUD, and I'm waiting on a response to that question. And then I can update council once I know that response.
Thank you, KJ. Are there any other questions for KJ or comments before we go to vote? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you for the presentation, KJ.
Before we leave it, Mayor, I, I would like to get your permission, you and the council, to work with Marty and KJ to roll out a press release about this and put it on the Forward platform, so that we tell everybody, you know, got another hundred and ten thousand dollars, and call KJ to get your application and get it in. So if that's all right with you, get that press release out tomorrow.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the utilization of Forward. It's a nice, everybody's on it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, that is it for our informationals this evening. We're going to move into public comment. Do we have any present public comment? Is there any public comment this evening for the Committee of the Whole? Hearing none, and with no further business for Committee of the Whole, I'd like to close out the Committee of the Whole and go into our council agenda this evening. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have an invocation this evening from our Alderman Went.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we come out of the Thanksgiving weekend in this difficult year, may we reflect and focus on the blessings we all share. During these trying times, may we all work together for the health and betterment of our community. And may we also be thankful for our first responders that keep us safe each and every day. May we keep them in our hearts and wish them health and safety as they serve our community. Amen.
Thank you, Alderman. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Schoolmaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
Your Honor requests approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty. Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of November tenth, two thousand twenty, as corrected, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on December first, two thousand twenty. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty-three-five dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-five zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Tables thirty-five dash thirty-two oh one point three and thirty-five dash thirty-three oh one point two in their entirety, enacting in lieu thereof two new tables, thirty-five dash thirty-two oh one point three... and 35-3301.2 in their entirety, enacting in lieu thereof two new tables, 35-3201.3 and 35-3301.2 relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill 3036-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by amending Section 35-5209 concerning fences. Council Bill 3037-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Table 35-3401.1, permitted land uses by removing storage, personnel, as a permitted use in the B4 highway-intensive business district. Council Bill 3038-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 24 personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances by amending Section 24-2305 concerning layoffs. Resolutions. Council Bill 1125-2020, a resolution approving an agreement with USI Insurance for brokerage services for liability, property, workers' compensation, and cyber insurance for a period of one year commencing December 1, 2020, and authorizing a human resources manager to execute any and all documents in order to bind and accept coverage with insurance program managers group for liability, property, workers' compensation insurance, and Tokyo Marine HCC for cyber insurance for a period of one year commencing December 1, 2020. Council Bill 1126-2020, a resolution approving an agreement with Genesis Occupational Health for occupational health services for a three-year period commencing December 1, 2020. Council Bill 1127-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to preliminary engineering services agreement with motor fuel tax funds with Hutchison Engineering Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $512,314.50. Council Bill 1128-2020, a resolution approving an independent contractor's agreement with Miller Trucking and Excavating for snow removal services.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Parker.
Second.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, and we have a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please. Alderman Went.
Aye, sorry about that.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Council Bill 3039-2020, an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the city of Moline, Illinois, for the tax levy year 2020, collectible in the year 2021, enacting an ordinance relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill 3040-2020, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem text within the city of Moline, Illinois, Special Service Area Number Five of the city of Moline, Illinois. Council Bill 3041-2020, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem text within the city of Moline, Illinois, Special Service Area Number Six of the city of Moline, Illinois. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
We'll now go into council business, and so I'm going to move around the council chambers and see if any council members have anything they'd like to discuss this evening. Alderman Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Went.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Potter.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer.
Yes, Your Honor. About, well, I have on my calendar that one year ago, we talked about land bank, and we had received a grant of, I think, $50,000 to do a study on that. And I was kind of hoping that maybe before the end of the year, we might be able to get that on the agenda to just find out. I know KJ's been working on it, but it'd be kind of good timing to, for the end of the year, to hear where we're at on that and to see how we might be able to proceed. I know there's other money that we can potentially request.
Great. Is that something we could see in December?
We've engaged a consultant, Tesco and Associates out of Chicago, to, you know, do that study. And in fact, I just talked to KJ about it today, and, because we approved a payment, recent payment. So we're going to, I'll find out when the draft report will be ready and where we're at for our next meeting. Awesome. I don't know if it's going to be ready by the end of the year, but I know it, they've been working on it.
Thank you. So we'll look for that in the next meeting.
Thank you.
We'll edit it as an informational for the next meeting, get an update of whatever we've got. Thank you, Alderman Moyer. Is there anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Schoolmaker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron.
Nothing.
Alderman Berg.
Nothing, Your Honor.
You, I have one item that I'd like the council to consider this evening. So as a community, we deal with emergency housing issues together, and I have a request that is being facilitated through our Moline Community Development Council. Our director, Jane O'Brien, is requesting help with this. So she also serves on the Scott County Housing Council as part of her responsibilities of Moline Community Development Council Administrator. This is her request. This entity is the administration agent for winter emergency services that the organization Humility Homes and Services operates. Humility Homes and Services provides emergency shelter for the homeless, which serves the entire Quad Cities, Illinois and Iowa. An informational session, cost utilization locations, was presented at the Illinois Quad City Municipal Leadership Team. This discussion resulted in an agreement to share the costs of the winter emergency shelter services. At this time, they are requesting that the city of Moline assist by providing $3,500 in financial support. So I am offering that for consideration of the council. I do not have an item identified, although I inquired to Marty. Marty, is there an area that we could fund the $3,500 from?
$3,500? I'm sure we can.
$3,500? Okay. So Marty could make arrangements for that if that's something the council is willing to support.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we fulfill that request and, subject to Marty finding the funds available in our budget.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your Honor.
I, yep, whoever's saying, yep.
Alderman Potter, is this to assist with the Sisters of Humility or the homeless project over on the other side of the river? Is that correct?
My understanding is Humility of Homes is based on the Devonport side, but they, my understanding is from our services that we work with for housing situations, that they are kind of the last resort of emergency-type situations. So they support our area as well. They work with the agencies that we, that our police department works directly with.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
If I could just have a follow-up?
Certainly.
I'm very supportive of this personally. I've contributed to this organization almost annually, my wife and I, to assist with this effort. I'm not sure I think this is an appropriate use of cities' taxpayer money. I think that we should encourage our residents to assist with this. As I said, I personally, my wife and I have, have in the past, and will continue to assist with this, but I intend to vote no on this because I don't think it's an appropriate use of local taxpayer money is going to that over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
That motion carries. Thank you very much for your consideration. I don't have anything else this evening. Is there anything, Marty? Do you have anything for us?
No, I don't, no.
Does any other staff person have anything this evening? And then I'd like to open it up one more time for public comment. Hearing none. Alderman Moyer.
Your Honor.
Oh, Alderman Williams this evening.
I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C2, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
We have a, by Alderman Williams, is there a second?
Second, Parker.
We have a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoolmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. We'll now begin a discussion. Please clear the public chamber.